Alright guys, it's 6:30, so we are going to call this meeting of the Nottingham Select Board for Monday, May 15th. We will first start, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just briefly starting off, we're gonna go through, this is a regular meeting. We are not talking tonight about any personal issues, our personnel issues, because that is not the policy of this board. So, we're just gonna leave it right there at that. And we're gonna move on right now to our, anybody wanna make a motion on the accounts payable and the manifest?
I move to approve.
I second.
So we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Aye, John Moore. We need a approval for the public minutes for 5-1 and the non-public minutes for 5-1.
I'll make a motion to approve both the public and non-public minutes for 5-1.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Sherland, aye.
John Moore, aye.
Tim DeBrio, aye.
Well, since, I'll go through this quickly. The board from assigned committees, budget is not met yet. CIP has not met yet. Marston's...
Working on putting a committee together. Basically, everybody that was on the committee has dropped off of the committee at this point, so...
Okay.
So, restarting.
Okay. Planning Board, we did have a nice planning board last Wednesday, which I am the rep from the board on that, and it was about the old USA Springs building and the new owners transforming in that into, they're using the same structure that was there. So, they're going to be redoing that, adding a road in, and it's gonna be a manufacturing and storage facility area. So, this'll, they had to now go through a separate thing called the regional impact because of the location and bordering other towns and the amount of trucks. So, if you're interested in seeing that, you can go back and look at the minutes from the last planning board meeting, and we will be having, I'm sure, many more discussions on that project as we go forward at the next planning board meetings. The next meeting to discuss that should be one month from last Wednesday.
Really, manufacturing?
It's open to everything. There's no set. He was, it was just going over the building size, what they're doing, amount of bays they're gonna have for trucks, briefly over lighting scenarios, because we have dark sky, things that were gonna, you know, they wanted to go out, something about some wetlands out back, and just making sure that they meet all the things, but it was a very interesting plan and it's the first phase of a couple other phases to expand on the other side of the property. So, it's where they're starting from, since the structure's already there. Well, we wouldn't really call it a structure, it's just metal I-beams and a roof, but...
Skeleton.
Yeah, for where they're gonna go on it. Uh, no, it was just on the building structure, what's going on there. He doesn't have any tenants or anything yet for it, so we don't know what's gonna be, it's gonna be light manufacturing, I don't think it's gonna be anything because he's, I, wants to rent out the place to, there's gonna be probably many businesses in the, inside there. It's not just one particular business. Town Administrator's report?
Okay, I'll start off with an item that we tabled from the May 1st meeting, and that's the paving bids. Sean did reach out and was able to get a total figure for advanced excavating and paving. They were the ones that had only given us the tonnage pricing. So, that came in at $530,078.51. R&amp;D paving still remains the lowest bid. We reached out and, actually Sean reached out and he was able to get three other towns that have used them with letters of recommendation. Those were included in your packets. And I believe the recommendation still stands. He's here in the audience if you want his feedback.
R&amp;D?
R&amp;D.
Their bid came in at $504,000 in some minor, the next bid that was closest was $530,000, which was advanced.
Yeah, I looked through all of them and the biggest difference was the cost. The rate that they were using was, you know, lower than the rate for every other. Everything else seemed the same.
And I believe Deerfield just awarded R&amp;D, is that correct? If you don't mind, Sean.
Northwood uses R&amp;D. I spoke to the road agent over there, he's very happy with them. I spoke to Steve Rollins, the former road agent for Deerfield. He was very pleased with them, has no complaints. I even spoke with John Farnold, our former road agent. R&amp;D has paved in this town and he had nothing bad to say about them at all.
So, at this time, does anybody wanna make a motion that we approve the contract to R&amp;D paving?
I'll make the motion to approve R&amp;D paving.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, all in favor?
Matt Sherland, aye.
John Moore, aye.
Tim DeBrio, aye.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Next, the Conservation Commission has recommended the reappointment of Cheryl Smith and Susan Mooney. And I'm looking for a motion to approve those at the Conservation Commission's recommendation. There's an official appointment letter in the packet for each.
Anybody wanna make a motion to approve Cheryl Smith and Susan Mooney?
I make the motion to approve, to appoint Cheryl Smith and Susan Mooney to the Conservation Commission.
Cheryl, a second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, roll call?
Matt Sherland, aye.
Aye, John Moore.
Tim DeBrio, aye.
And next, now that we are members of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission with voting rights, there is a request to appoint Cheryl Smith to serve as the Town's representative and Teresa Bascom as the alternate. That came in from the planning board. If you'd like to make a motion to appoint as recommended.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Cheryl Smith as the primary and Teresa Bascom as the alternate.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote?
Matt Sherland, aye.
John Moore, aye.
Tim DeBrio, aye.
Item number four was two-part. This discussion started back in December by the interim TA, John Scruton. We had two major projects here at the Town Office. One of them was the underdrain repair, the waste drain repair. There was blockage, the toilets were backing up. That project is almost complete. If you've taken a look out in the gymnasium, Bodett &amp; Sons has been here for the past week clearing out the lines, running cameras to see where the blockage was. And fortunately, they were able to find that up to the family restroom over here, the plumbing is somewhat new and that's not where the blockage originated from. So, we were able to keep that side of the building intact. We didn't have to rip up the flooring. We didn't have to get into the new kitchen renovation or anything like that. So, the problem is actually right around that, the family restroom. And they had to come out into the gymnasium floor just because there's a lot of electrical that's run under there. So, we tried to stay away from the electrical. So, there's a new drain that has been installed all the way out to the cleanout. In addition to that, we have an oil tank that, it was, it was left up in the air. As far as I can see from reviewing the minutes, there was never an official decision as to what we were gonna do. The proposal was brought forward to pump out the oil that's in the tank after installing two new above-ground tanks, 330-gallon tanks, and moving forward with some type of an Alaskapad or some type of a structure to encapsulate the tanks. But I don't see anywhere where you made a decision on how you would like to move forward, so I'm bringing that up.
That was on the last meetings, we can go back in the minutes, you can see as the board discussed that issue there, was the fact of, you know, I think it was more of a precaution is that we don't have a problem now and it's something that we should maybe address before a problem becomes. If there is ever a leak with that tank underground, then it's gonna require hazmat. It's gonna probably cost the town a lot more money to fix the problem than if we took pre-action before there was a problem by moving the tank. We were proposing to use ARPA money for that, to get it fixed. But the board, again, you guys are the new members, so it'd be something to fill you in, was the cost factor of whether you decide whether you think it is the right action for us to take to pre-do it and spend that money on ARPA? Or do we, I don't wanna say, like in the past, wait till there's a problem and see if, you know, and that problem might not happen for five years or 10 years, you know, but you can't predict it in an underground tank. So, the questionnaire that was brought by the intern, Town Administrator, was do we wanna take action as a preventative measure? And we never decided as a vote, because we were all talking and then we switched boards and now we got all new members and so we were kinda tabling it to get the new board's opinion. Which is, well, we got two out of the three here, so, I mean, that's something which we, again, it's not needed to decide today. If you wanna wait till we have a full board to have a full discussion on this?
Yeah, just trying to get some more information. Do you know, like, do you use straight number-two fuel? Like, regular heating oil? Or does it have to be like the kerosene blend? Like, if you move it above ground, you have to start using different fuel to make sure it doesn't gel up and things of that nature?
Well, not being any of an expert, unless somebody here is an expert on oil and...
We'd probably have to, I mean, just coming from having an above-ground tank or dealing with living in a trailer.
An outside tank?
Yeah.
That you have to use a blend?
You have to use a blend. You have to use a special blend so that it doesn't gel up in the winter time. It does typically cost more, but it, you don't have to dig it up again either. So, then there's a reduced cost if you ever have to make any repairs to it.
So, the question is in front of us right now is, do you want to, again, since this is not a, I mean, it's something we have to address in the quick near future, but something that I don't think is prudent to be, make a decision tonight unless you feel like you guys want to make a decision on, on spending the money and doing it right now without the rest of the board members?
No.
We do have a quorum, we are...
No, I understand that. There's just a lot of, like, a little bit of back history we wanna dig into and find out the extent of the costs and get some more questions answered I can try to think of, just so we have a real idea of what the cost is gonna be going long-term to.
Yeah, because we have the tentative numbers that you see here of, you know, removal estimate of $15,000.
Yep.
You know, then the replacement of the two tanks, three tanks plus piping and everything, that being estimated at $7,500, not including the structure to go around, so...
Where, where's this tank currently?
Uh, the tank currently is right outside the gymnasium double doors.
Okay. Under the ground?
Underground.
And that's, that's where they're roughly tentatively thinking of placing it again?
Right.
Just above ground? And whether or not you choose to remove the existing underground tank or just pump what's out of there and...
Clean it and...
And clean it and leave it.
Right, so I mean, this is a twenty...
Which is another expense.
This can be an, up to a $25,000 expenditure.
Yeah, I think we need, it'd be prudent to get more information and get everybody here and buying, just so that, make sure all the proper questions are asked.
Is there a time you guys wanna set for this? Looks like the next meeting is going to be on the 5th, correct?
Correct.
And right now, we have a full board for that meeting, unless anybody's not?
Negative.
No.
Steve will not be here on June 5th either.
Is there a time you guys wanna discuss it, wanna put it on the agenda for one of our meetings in June?
Yeah.
The next meeting?
The 19th.
June 19th?
You're good with that? That give me enough time to get the information you're looking for?
I think so.
So, we'll table the discussion for everybody to know on what we're gonna do and how we're gonna handle the oil tanks, whether replacing or the situation on that, and that'll be held on the meeting of June 19th. Well, I'm not asking if he's an expert, but he does have the right to have an opinion when he sits up here, so we're gonna let him speak. Okay, well, that's something I didn't know either.
So, moving on, we have a 2006 International 10-Wheel Dump Truck that we replaced recently, and I would like to know how you would like to proceed with disposing of it. It does have a salvage title. So, recommendation would probably be to put it out for sealed bids or however you see fit, but we should probably do that sooner than later.
Well, it's not doing it, it's good just sitting there, so...
No, it's not.
Why wouldn't we?
Will we put a reserve on the sealed bids? Is there a number that we're looking for, like, we won't take any under? Or we're willing to let it go for like a dollar? Say it again, please?
You can reject this if you want.
You have the right to reject any and all.
Right. Sean, do you have any input on the truck or?
Yeah, I don't, you can put a reserve on it. You have the right to, as they said, to decline. $5,000 reserve. It's a salvage title. Lot of deterioration in the truck. I can go higher if you like, but that's just my suggestion.
So, I guess if we have, if we have, in my opinion, if we have the right to kill, refuse a bid, then we would. But I don't wanna see us, in my opinion, of us sitting around on this thing and watching it just rot in our, and not getting any bottom money that we can use for something else in this town.
We, we looked at trading that in when we got it, the other, the new truck to replace it, and they offered us $3,000 for it based on having a salvage title.
See, that's a good bit of information to know for, for futures?
Yeah.
So, did you guys feel okay for having Ellen write up a, a proposal for this, to sell it? And have the sealed bids come in and then we'll review them?
You put a timeframe around that?
Well, that was gonna be my next question. I would recommend giving it some exposure, so maybe having the bid opening for the June 19th meeting as well. That gives it...
You're gonna list it for the June 19th meeting, or you...
To open, to open the bids. We can, I can advertise it as soon as tomorrow and bid opening for June 19th. That gives it a little bit more than a month of exposure.
Yep. Works. Thanks again, John.
We don't need a, a vote on that.
Last, at the last meeting, Charlotte Fife had requested that you petition Governor and Council for the state representative vacancy for holding a special election. It was noted in record, I was gonna request a formal vote, but since then, Northwood Board of Selectmen has agreed to do so. So, we will be having a special election. This is just an FYI. I understand that it will be held in July, but I still have to...
I think that's the earliest it could be held.
Yes, and I'm not sure if Deanne's here. I'm sorry. If you would like to address that now or later.
If you guys don't mind, come up and just give us a little guidance on what you think we should be doing as our... Unfortunately, everything costs money nowadays, so it's just another...
We have to do both, primary and, primary and...
So, the only, one of my questions here would be is our location. Due to the fact that the rec using this building for the summertime programs being July 19th, would we have to go back to like normal, having things at the school?
Yeah, most likely. Probably makes the most sense anyway. Are they using this building or are they now using the school?
No, they're back here.
They're back here? Okay, then yes, we'll use the school.
Okay, so at least we know location.
So, I put some notes together quickly, so hang on just a second. You have it open? So, once the Governor's Council approves of the request, then we have to hold the general election within 110 to 124 days, and the primary has to be 49 days prior to that. So, if the request goes in this week and they make a decision at their next meeting, which is, well, they meet every week, so next week, so then that kind of gives us our date timeline of what we would be looking at as far as when our dates would be. So, it would be the, typically the second Tuesday in September, and then 49 days before that, we would have to figure out what that Tuesday is for the primary election. Or they would tell us what the dates are.
They're gonna tell, so...
They're gonna tell us what the dates are.
We and Northwood are gonna be voting all on the same day?
Yes, we are. Yes. It is one election for one official, but we have to run a primary first.
Do we have to have a primary?
Yes, we have to, required by law. Yep, yep, have to have a primary first, and then, which has a whole bunch of rules to it, because you have to shut down, you have to stop the party changes, you have to have, we have to have sittings before that. The town clerk has to get stuff posted. We have to, you know, have a filing period for people to come in who are interested in filing for office and file for office, so we have to make sure that we have a clean checklist for that. So, there's a host of things that have to get done beforehand. And then, the election itself, going back and looking at some recent other special elections, Lori looked at a couple, I looked at a couple. There, there was one in Dearing, I think. They had 51 people show up for the primary, and then over 1,000 people show up for the general. So, you know, that's with Dawn, with staffing. We need at least two ballot clerks, one Democrat, one Republican for each shift. So, that's four right there. Board of Selectmen are required to be there for the full day, as you know. So, all, every other law as far as primary election and general election is in place for, for everything that we do.
Fully staffed.
Fully staffed. We have to, we have to do the machine test. Lori's not sure if the state's gonna supply the ballots or if we're gonna have to pay for the ballots.
It's $10,000?
Ten, huh?
$10,000? Is that what I said?
Uh, between the two elections, my best guess is $10,000 between the two, between the two elections.
And the bad news is, in our budget...
We pulled out a special election at the request of someone who will not, not be named. We did. I can only make recommendations.
So, we have a funding issue with...
Absolutely.
Yep. I mean, Dawn and I can throw together an actual budget from our side of things, and then we can get Lori's input, but until we know where the town's gonna pay for the ballots, or if we, each town has to pay for the ballots, and then there's the cost to, to LHS to prepare the cards for the machines, which there are two. That alone is a couple of thousand dollars for each card, for each election.
We have a backup and the actual guy.
It'll probably be less simply because, with this is a small election, there's not gonna be a lot of information on it.
Yeah, we'd also have like, like normal election, you have four tables. You're only gonna have like two tables, right? You're not gonna expect this, I mean, again, it's tough to say.
It's tough to say. Like, do we run with like some other town's special election numbers? Or do we run with what our last primary?
Right. We've run two special elections, and I don't think we have those, I think it's been passed more than seven years. So, we don't have that in our archives any longer, so...
So, we can easily look at like what our turnout was for primary and for the state general, and I assume we'd be less.
But that's gonna be the best guess we can give you. As far as numbers.
Don't worry, you don't pay me.
Wait, can I make a motion so we can make sure that Dawn gets paid? Because she shouldn't be doing this for free.
I don't get paid.
Oh wait, that's a different meeting.
Not making that motion.
That's a whole different meeting, sorry.
So, then we'll know, you're thinking about a week?
Well, they'll, they'll take it up and discuss it and whatever, and depends on how soon Northwood gets their request up there, if they've already sent it. I don't know when the council meets again.
I feel like they did theirs last week. They might have already gotten it up there, the request up there.
So, my question is just for us here as the board, is that we have to make a decision on funding. So, we'll have to decide, once we get a number from them on how or where we're getting this money from in order to pay for this special election.
I'll have the budget reports prepared for the next meeting, and we can have a discussion.
Gonna sell that truck. Hope somebody comes for 15 grand, I don't think that's gonna happen, but...
Alright, so the question for you guys from us then is that, is do you need us for that discussion? And what's that date gonna be if you do?
All I'd like to see, from my opinion, from you, is a...
An estimated number?
Estimated more firmly of a number, so that we can adequately find that money in order to make this happen without doing something or taking money from somewhere we don't have to, you know, as a precursor of maybe...
State elections come under slightly more scrutiny than like our town elections as far as like how long people wait in line, how many check-in tables we have, so...
Whether or not they send out an actual inspector on the state, yep.
Try to do our best guessing. And be frugal, I'd say, at times.
Right, yep. As much as we can be.
Thank you.
You ready for me to carry on?
Just making my notes, keeping my file, yep.
The agreement for the after-school program has been fully executed by the town and the SAU. There's a copy in your packets available if you'd like to review it. I already went over the waste underdrain repair. Obviously, it's just about wrapping up as far as Bodett &amp; Sons is concerned. I do have to get a flooring company out here to replace some floor tiles in the gym that we removed. We had to cut away so that they could put the new drains underneath, and I'm hoping to get that wrapped up while the gym is closed for the month of May. We have the, the lights that are being upgraded to LED fixtures by the end of the month, and they're gonna replace some ceiling tiles at the same time, so hopefully all the disruptions to the gym will be wrapped up this month and it will be able to be reopened for pickleball and other activities come June.
As we finish this project?
Yes.
We should be set to go.
Yes, we should. Everything should be flowing down properly. That is the hope. There are some light fixtures out in the police station. I got a estimate for about $150 per fixture to replace them. I reached out to Carl Eden. He did a lighting assessment for us a few years ago, back when these fixtures were installed. So, he is interested in coming out to do another retrofit assessment to hopefully get us some cost savings, energy efficiency. They are authorized representatives for Eversource, our lighting provider. So, we'll see where that comes out to see if it's worthwhile, rather than just replacing a couple of the lights piecemeal. So, I'll have more updates for you on that once we do the assessment.
It says on here, you know, approximately 40-plus...
There's approximately 40-plus fluorescent light fixtures in the police department. I went over and just did a quick count, just to see how much we were looking at, if multiple needed to be replaced at $150. I was like, wow, this is gonna be a significant project.
That's why I'm asking about that.
So, that's why I reached out to Carl and said, you know, maybe if you do the assessment, there's a lot of good energy rebates out there through Eversource. So, you know, if, if we can qualify in the program, then we might be able to get them all taken care of at once, rather than...
And my, would we be able to use the money that was voted on for building maintenance with this?
I have to, I'm still monitoring that very loosely because there were a lot of projects that were put in place that have not been completed yet, that I have to pick up the pieces on. So, I just wanna make sure that we're not overspending money that was previously allocated, so I'm pulling that information together. John Scruton did a very good job at keeping spreadsheets, but it's just a matter of saying, okay, this has been done or this hasn't, so... okay, this has been done, or this hasn't, so I just wanna make sure that what you have already approved gets done, and that I don't double-book the money.
So as, for people to, that are here listening to this right now, um, as we will go through, uh, our buildings committee's review of stuff around, you're gonna see over the next couple of months that a lot of items like this are gonna be coming, 'cause as a board, we are going to take a more proactive, um, on our buildings, about maintaining them, about keeping them upgraded, and not waiting to problems to happen, and then be stuck under the gun of fixing it like we've done in the past. Uh, so that's why you'll see things like this coming up, these expenditures, 'cause again, we're just doing this, and for the fact of trying to do what the voters asked us to do, uh, and at previous meetings have asked us to do, is a better job of upkeeping our buildings and upkeeping, um, this so that we don't run into disasters, and I'll call our plumbing a disaster, 'cause that probably should have been fixed years ago, um, and that's why we're in the situation of spending the money on that, when it might have been able, something we could have took care of a while ago at a lesser cost. So that's why you'll find that things like this are gonna be coming up more often, as we try to do the will of what you've asked us to do, and about keeping costs down and doing things that are gonna better off the town buildings, and, again, moving to LED lights and stuff like this is obviously more cost-effective in the long run for us, so something you do today hopefully will benefit us in the long run in the future, uh, and also knocking off potential problems that might occur from us delaying doing these projects. But as everybody knows, everything comes as an expense, and we are not made of a, a boatload of money to be dropping every single thing at once, so items like this will be discussed at length with the board in order to make sure that we are doing what we feel is the right decision for the town, and for the amount of money that we have budgeted, and that we can keep things going in a positive direction. So, there'll be more of this stuff coming up, just FYI.
All right, and just wrapping up, updates, uh, the youth fishing derby was held over this past weekend. I did not have a chance to connect with Courtney to find out how well it went, and hopefully it went well. Um, as far as the highway department is concerned, Sean's here, he could probably provide you with a better update, but grading's continuing with the drier weather that we're receiving. Um, Saks Road's being monitored after the impact from the recent rainfall. Uh, Sean, Matt, and I met with John Jackman, um, he's wrapping up the stormwater asset man, asset management project that was, we received grant funding for a few years back, so he will be ready to present to you probably by the end of summer on the stormwater asset management plan. There's a forty-two-page document that goes along with that, that I'm happy to share with you at some point if you haven't already looked at it. And lastly, um, just for a formal announcement, uh, Ben Bartlett was not able to attend tonight, he is at a mandatory training, and unfortunately, Steve Welch had prior commitments, uh, both, affecting both tonight's attendance and the June fifth meeting, so he will not be here. And that's all I have.
Our assessing side of this right here, has everybody seen those? Do you wanna see them in hand? We have them here, or if you already looked at them, that's great. Um, somebody wanna do an approval or non-approval on the...
I'll move to...
Fine nights?
I'll move to approve the map fifteen, lot seven elderly exemption.
I second that.
Yeah, so do you wanna go through and just read them all, the, the second one, and just do one call voter on it, or do you wanna go as individuals?
Just be careful, 'cause one of them was a denial.
That's right, map fifty-three lots, map sixty-three lot fifty, the second one down was the denial.
Tom, motion in a second.
So we got a motion in a second, all in favor, roll call.
Asherland, aye.
Aye, John Morn.
Tim DeBri, aye.
So map, uh, fifteen lot seven's approved.
Correct.
Next.
So I make a motion to deny, uh, map fifty, map sixty-three lot five-zero elderly exemption.
Second.
So we have vote of denial, uh, from map sixty-three lot fifty, roll call vote. Uh, so then do I say aye, I approve the denial?
Yeah, well, I guess, yeah.
Yes. Masterland, aye.
For the denial, aye, John Morn.
Tim DeBri, aye.
For the denial of, um, map sixty-three lots fifty.
Correct. And then I can make a motion to approve map sixteen lot thirty-one, uh, disabled exemption, approve map fifteen lot eight dash two veteran credit, map forty-four lot two dash eleven veteran credit, and map seventy-one lot twenty veteran credit.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a, since you just read them all, we have a motion in a second, a roll call vote.
Masterland, aye.
Aye, John Morn.
Tim DeBri, aye. I'll make a motion to approve the map fifty-two lot four-two-three land use change tax.
Aye, second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, roll call.
Masterland, aye.
Aye, John Morn.
Tim DeBri, aye. And finally, I'll make a motion to approve map thirty-two lots nineteen and twenty-two, current use application.
Aye, second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Masterland, aye.
Aye, John Morn.
Tim DeBri, aye.
Um, we have no appointments set?
No, do we have to finish up for the action items from last meeting?
That's, yep. I'll just pre-hand, but yeah. Uh, action for last meetings, review the paving bids, which we already just took care of. Uh, the baler for the recycling center. I think the next four items are really just Sean explaining everything.
So the, the cat, the key and flattener, as it's called, is broke, does not work, unrepairable, can no longer get parts. Um, so there was an option thrown at us to, uh, replace it with a baler, and that would also, uh, replace the can trailer that we currently use as well to take cans to hiding metals. Um, we approximately do, uh, four hundred pounds of aluminum cans per week, which is the equivalent of one bail if we had the baler. Um, with the baler, you would be able to, uh, stockpile bales, and then you could just load them into a dump truck, and you would go every three months or so, uh, to hidings to get rid of them. Uh, another, um, I don't know, that was about it, excuse me, um, do you have any questions on that?
So is that more efficient and more cost-effective than having the trailer?
In the long run, it'll work out that way, that, uh, to have the, we could continue with the trailer, we're looking, um, approximately, uh, eight to ten thousand dollars to, uh, to get to do a new trailer. We'd have to, uh, we'd buy a trailer, and then, um, we'd have to put the sides on it, the top on it, and the hatch on it and stuff, and then take the floor and put a mesh floor on it. Um, so I got preliminary numbers on that, we would, uh, buy a trailer from someone like, uh, I R E P Enterprises in, uh, Greenland, or C M in Chi Chester, and then have, uh, have it outfitted, uh, with the mesh-sized mesh top, and things of that, and it, so it's similar to the one we have now. Um, the thing with the baler is that we won't have to have a truck every week haul a can trailer, we'll be able to just, you can send a dump truck over, and where we're gonna have the backhoe at the recycling center now, it's simply just pick them up with forks and load them into the, the dump truck. But the, uh, the option for the trailer is there as well.
How much was the baler?
Sixteen thousand.
And the cost of the trailer?
About ten thousand.
But then it's gonna be retrofitted?
It has to be retrofitted.
That would, that would be the cost to retrofit it.
Okay.
But then we also need a vehicle to transport.
Right, so...
So we have the utility over there now, but there's question about it passing inspection.
So we just took the old three fifty, which we replaced with the new one, and that's at the recycling center now for the remainder of its life, which, which I don't know what that is, and it's not that long.
How often would the trailer be filled? Is that, would it be every week that trailer would have to be?
It goes every week now, yeah.
And then, you know, well, you get into the fuel of a small truck versus the fuel of a ten-wheel dump truck, or, but you're only doing it once a month, and...
And so then people would be bringing all of the cans back into the building? We wouldn't be doing both anymore?
That, that's the other thing, is the cans will come back into the building.
Is there any other training, like, do we have the floor space?
We have the floor space for it, yes.
Okay.
And we have the window where the, they used to bring all the cans inside and put them into the flattener, we'd go in the same spot where the current broken machine is now. It is a similar size, it's not like the big cardboard and plastic balers we have, those produce, uh, between like twelve and fourteen hundred pound bales, this is only gonna produce uh, four hundred or four hundred and fifty pound bales, it's a smaller baler. But it can be used too for other products, not just aluminum cans.
Okay. And then there's obviously, you're gonna have to have the, the binding material that goes with the baler, like the...
Yeah, the metal, uh, twine they use to, uh, to rope the...
Secure, so there's kind of a maintenance that goes with it too.
Is the price of the sixteen, does that include removing the old baler and adding the, the new one?
Yes.
Will there be any other unencouraged cost, or is that pretty firm at sixteen, we'll have an up and running new?
This is, I got this quote on, uh, April eleventh, it's valid, I'd have to update it, 'cause the quote ran out on May eleventh, so I just have to confirm with Atlantic, yeah, Atlantic Recycling, yeah. But yeah, I would say that, that they've been fair company to deal with, so I would say it's still firm price, but I will, uh, confirm that.
Uh, during the installation, will it affect any of our operations, or would this be all done at the time of when the dump is not presently open?
Correct.
Okay. Just asking questions. Oh, sorry, yeah. Put that in the notes, thanks.
So is this something that Wayne, you and Wayne would recommend doing the baler over the...
I can't speak for Wayne, he's not here tonight, uh, yes, he, the initial conversation when it first came up, when that was broken, he, he, he seemed to be, uh, in favor of it.
So I'd recommend we get just an updated quote, just to make sure nothing has changed?
Yep, I can do that.
Then, do we vote on it at the next meeting?
Sure.
Once we get that quote.
Well, 'cause we're gonna, yeah, when we vote in the next meeting, we're gonna approve the amount of money that's being expended to the exact amount...
Right.
For the vote, so it would be prudent to have it, and not making a vote on a...
Expired bid.
Expired bid, which is subject to change, or hopefully it won't change at all, hopefully it'll stay the same the way it is.
And what's the turnaround time from, let's say on the fifth, we approve this, to be us being like up and running?
Uh, let me, I'll get back to you on that, I believe it's within a couple of weeks, but I'll confirm.
Okay, 'cause summertime, I'm sure there's gotta be some more cans coming around for the summer than there is maybe...
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, big weekend coming up.
Right, exactly, so...
Um, that's the baler, what other equipment status at recycling center, was that all lumped together?
Um, well, we had also discussed the tire storage that needs to be addressed.
Yes.
Um, so one of the options was a convex storage box.
Yes, um, so I looked at America the Beautiful for a grant on the box, uh, the box I was looking at is a used box, so I can't get a grant on a used box, because a new one and a used one is considerable price difference, um...
Why do tires need to be in storage again?
They have, yes, they have to be enclosed, uh, there's a couple of things, uh, it's the water that gets in the tires, creates, it's a breeding ground for insects.
It's a fire hazard.
Fire hazard. Um, I found a used container right down the road in Chi Chester, uh, for twenty-seven hundred dollars.
How big is it?
It's, uh, ten by twenty, eight by twenty, excuse me.
So, all right.
How is this now gonna work, if we get a twenty-foot convex floor tires, does somebody come and pick that up now, like you do?
So the tires are picked up currently, as soon as you get to a specific amount, you call it into the NRA, RA, and then, uh, the, the people come and get the tires, so...
They just hand remove them out of the thing and throw it in the truck and go?
Yeah, they do, they do it now.
I've never watched the process on it, but...
Yeah, so they just back the truck up and they throw them in the back of their truck that they come with, and they take them away. It's the same thing, they just open the doors on a container and, um, they haul them out. Uh, the trailer, uh, the can is eight feet by twenty feet, winded, watertight, uh, storage shipping container.
Okay.
And that's at C M Truck and Trailer Sales in Chi Chester.
Twenty-seven hundred, is that delivered?
Twenty-seven ninety-five.
Is that delivered, you know, or do we still have...
Delivered.
Okay.
Do we have to do anything on the ground in order to make it so it's structurally set, or you're just gonna throw heavy rock gravel down, or is there a pad already in place?
It should be able to go right where the existing tires are now, on the concrete pad that the tires are sitting on.
And is this like we're out of code because, or is it like a have-to-do? I was kinda missed the...
Well, the alternative was to add a roof over them, and it came in over ten thousand dollars, and that got to nine.
Yeah, it was about nine thousand, yeah, it was just at ten, so...
Seems a little...
We started looking at other ways, and then we looked, found the containers, and that seems to be, make the most sense.
Well, twenty-eight hundred dollars, I don't think that's a... We had a bid for ten thousand to put a roof and make a whole container for it, which, this is a metal box, which...
Which is actually sealed from all angles and keeps everything out.
And this is required by the state, correct?
Yeah, the, yes.
'Cause it's been a couple of years, I think, that we've been talking about it.
It's been several, yes.
Yeah. Uh, and that bid is current?
Yes, that's, uh, as of last, uh, Thursday.
Uh, does anybody wanna make a motion about purchasing, uh, what's the name of the company again, C?
C M Truck and Trailer Sales.
C M Truck and Trailer Sales.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the tire storage container at C M Truck and Trailer for two thousand seven ninety-five dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, we do a roll call vote.
Masterland, aye.
Aye, John Morn.
Tim DeBri, aye.
Uh, let's throw on one, here it is. Did anybody get to look over the, uh...
Fifteen-year-old.
Well, yeah, I mean, since this stuff here, some of this stuff will take action, I mean, not to put things off, 'cause it's not what I like to do, um, but since we'll be probably, depending on what people's suggestions are on this, what we're talking about right now is the recycling, recycling center's trash disposal policy. The town of Noddy M owns and operates an active recycling center on Elefira Road, and ensure the, uh, optimum results from the recycling program, the following, following policy is enacted per RSA thirty-one dash thirty-nine, RSA one-four-nine dash M. The reason why we're reviewing this here, um, was this policy, uh, was enacted by the Board of Selectmen back on August thirty-first of two thousand nine. So due to the fact that this is well over ten years old, uh, the board found it to be prudent for us to actually maybe go through this policy and review it, and see if any updates are necessary. to be prudent for us to actually maybe go through this policy and review it and see if any updates are necessary or changes, uh, as we all change as a town and as it grows to make sure our policies are in line with all the best interests for the people in town and the people using for the recycling center. That's why we're having the conversation is due to the age of the document that is in front of us. Uh, it's not to rewrite history here, it's to make sure that we're up to date.
I believe the fees were updated. It shows April first, twenty-twenty-two.
Yep.
So the fees, I don't, that's one thing that, you know, for keeping costs, try to keep them even, if you will, um, but the... Yeah, I mean, this still mentions the swap shed, which is long since gone. It even mentions the one-dollar fee for the sticker, which we no longer do because we now use it as a recycling center and beach and town facility parking permit, so it's handed out with registrations, good for the current motor vehicle year.
Uh, we changed the bag policy.
Yep. Styrofoam has to go in bulky waste. Been there, told that. You haven't brought styrofoam to the recycling center.
Is this something you guys want to make the small changes tonight with and go over right now as a discussion? And maybe take some public discussion on anything, or is this something that you guys want to?
Um, I mean, I, I do use the facility, um, but I think too, there's a lot of, I don't know what else we have in here that we might be missing out on. Probably should get Sean's buy-in on if the fee schedule should be updated to like our current disposal costs. If we're taking in tires at XYZ, are we losing twenty dollars a shipment? Are we making?
There was another tire increase, yeah, so that would have to be looked at again.
Right, so we'd wanna get the fees all updated, so I think we're gonna have to gather information to make the best choices on, on all of this, and I don't know how to fix the form itself, if anybody has any. Want a good time to do that? Need almost like a, a separate session to not put everybody to sleep.
And do you guys know what is the process for a commercial enterprise to use the recycling center?
I didn't hear the question.
So it, on this policy, it says that their, uh, trash recyclable items from any commercial enterprises will only be considered for acceptance on a case-by-case basis. Do you know?
By the pound and by the truck, it's based on truckload size, so yes, there's some commercial people that are dumping stuff up there.
Because don't we have a fee that's supposed to be now as if you come in with a full?
Well, it's just something that's, it's another one of those things that needs to be examined and taken into consideration if we're opening this up to make changes. It's, it's, it's usually that, uh, they, they frown upon commercial, uh, use of the recycling center, it's strictly, uh, for the purpose of residential.
I think the issue came up is, obviously there's a lot of small business owners in town and they show up with their truck and it's like, well, how do you know it's your trash or your business trash and they're, if it's a builder shows up and it's obviously building material and they're trying to figure out how to handle it, who shows up with.
Uh, the, the other thing that will need to be looked at to go hand in hand with this will be the operating plan for the recycling center as well. The post-closure plan has been updated just this year, but the operating plan is still, it's that of two thousand and ten, I believe. Or thirteen, I can't recall, but it should be looked at again because if we're making changes on this, we're gonna have to look at that and make changes in that accordingly.
Okay. What are some general things that you might be thinking on the operating? I mean, just general, no, just...
The, uh, the operating, um, I can't really
Okay.
jump at any, jump, one thing jumps out at me at this time, but I've been going through it again lately and stuff. There's some hours in there, you have to, um, that we might wanna change, um, to reflect the current hours out of working.
Yep. So the table at some point, do we have to have like a meeting for?
It would probably be best to do a work session.
Yeah.
We, we also wanna put it on there, so the fact that the public, by setting a meeting time, we can put it on our, uh, the town website, so that people that are interested in the changes that we're gonna be making, whether it'll affect them, you know, due to cost changes or stuff like this, that they're involved with the
Mm-hmm.
um, reasoning behind of what we're talking about and why we're talking about it.
Does, Sean, does NRA, do they like, come, would they come out and take a look at the center and the operations and how we're currently doing things and make suggestions for improvements?
I, I can't answer, but I can surely find out about that.
Because I think that would be helpful, especially where all of the recycling material that we've been, we're doing when this was originally designed.
Yeah, the flow, it doesn't work in, in there anymore, because it was built in nineteen seventy-four with the population of what it was then and not what it is now.
But anything like that is also gonna revolve in a cost factor and time wise.
Will they charge you for that?
It's, uh...
Well, they don't, but if, if they make suggestions.
No, exactly, yeah, but if it can help improve operations and potentially increase revenue.
Right. What'd you say?
He's asking of the company.
Oh, Northeast Resource Recovery Association, NARA.
They do our marketing of all our commodities that we, um, put out, the cardboard, the plastic, the cans, the metal.
So the other one's finding the homes for this material?
Yep.
And a lot of that market's kinda dried up and...
They do, yeah, they do everything in there except for the MSW, which is handled, uh, by Waste Management.
So we're gonna set together a workshop at some point to...
I would recommend setting up a work session so you can brainstorm some ideas and then bringing it forward for a public hearing and then you can get the public's input on the proposed changes.
Sure. So, yep.
We have to...
To, here's a question, is do you wanna set the workshop for this to be on a scheduled meeting night, or do you wanna have a separate night for a workshop? Due to the time that could be involved in this and the time of something else that comes more prudent, uh, in front of the board? Not to have this something that's set further down the road.
I would say something outside of this so that maybe people from the recycling center could attend and be part of the process too.
Correct. But so having a, a separate date from a regular scheduled board meeting is what I'm basically asking?
Yep. For that.
So I'll just get a consensus of availability and go from there?
Yep.
Okay.
And then that'll be posted for everybody.
So you said, Sean, the, the last, the F-three-fifty got moved to the recycling center, but we don't, is there gonna be like a plow truck at the facility? Is it until it dies?
Um, it does have a plow with it, but the new backhoe that's gonna be up there is, is coming with a snowbox on it too, so we'll be able to do both.
Okay, so there's now a backhoe up there as opposed to the bombcat?
It's not there yet. It, it was ordered, um, and so we're just waiting for it to show up, but when it was ordered, we, a snow, a ten-foot snowbox that goes on the front of it was purchased along with it.
Okay. So what's the purpose of keeping the truck for?
To do cans.
Well, we're gonna change that policy since we, oh...
Well, maybe.
Oh, we're gonna...
So, it's final resting spot.
Can we sell it?
We can sell it, yeah, we can.
Two-for-one deal with the, you have a fund.
Yeah.
There is no, what I'm basically asking is if we get the new baler for the cans
Mm-hmm.
and we're gonna do that process there, there will be no use for that truck to be there.
Then we, we...
For us to be taking space and just having a...
Right, then we'd, we'd, we'd sell it.
We'd go to sell it again with the plow.
We're doing with the three hun, uh, the international.
We do plow and everything on it, right?
Yep, yep.
All goes as one package?
Yes. F-three-fifty.
Is that it in respect right now?
Just one up there, this one.
Okay.
Anything else for Sean? I can't remember.
Lamprey Drive.
Yes.
That's right, we did wanna talk to Sean. So Sean, tell us why you don't think we should approve Lamprey Drive?
It's my recommendation that the, the survey and the plan as part of the conditions when this first came up wasn't mapped. It's part of, those are the town, town road rules.
It was voted on by the prior board.
To have specific, there was a set of criteria, right, to how we were gonna set forth on this, but then I believe you were unavailable at the time to meet during the construction phase of it, so there was no...
Yeah, but before the construction was to start, they would've had to have done the survey and had a plan to look at. And that didn't happen. I actually spoke to Kevin Cole, uh, the day before I went in for my surgery. And he was asking me questions about it and I didn't, told him I didn't think it was going forward because I hadn't seen the survey or the plan yet, and he said, oh, okay.
They did have the survey of the road where it's going to be, or where, we know where the lot lines are, we know where everything is set.
You need existing conditions. You had a road, you have a road there now that, that's not even on the map, that we don't know what it is.
What road's that?
It's a, it's like a driveway that cuts down to the point.
You mean the little circle area?
No, you go before you go down to the circle area, there's one on the right that cuts down.
I mean, I guess big picture, look, I, I don't fully understand all the rules that were set up beforehand. I did drive this portion and it is the best part of the entire section that I drove. So if we were to not approve it, what becomes then? We just don't recognize it? It's still there?
We don't do, we don't do maintenance on it. It can, you can still, the road, it'll be a private road.
But it means, you know, you wouldn't plow the, the hundred feet or whatever, two hundred feet of the road to make it easier? Would you back up and go back around? You went through the loop, even though it's there and accessible?
That hill's questionable. I wouldn't put a large truck down that hill.
Well, whatever unit you're sending down there, just, I kinda maybe get how we, a little bit, seems like there's a torturous path of how we got to, may have gotten built, may, whatever. The road is there now and I just don't see...
Well, that, it's, my recommendation is before you, and you guys make the decision.
Right, but I wanted to at least try to understand, is it like the construction of the road? Like, if we look through, like, well, we didn't have our meetings, but I gotta say the road is well-built, there's anything like that?
It appears to be, but I don't know. I don't have a plan to look at to see what was put in. There was no inspections done.
I need those pictures of what they did, but... I see, I, I see the road as a benefit for public safety, public access for making, well, not for public, but you know, for any emergency vehicles, uh, for getting through, because now there's two points of access. And one of the things that even on the planning board, as we sat there before we, we did, um, you know, these smaller subdivisions, Nottingham always had a rule back in the day where you're supposed to have two points of access. You know, there wasn't, uh, any straight little cul-de-sacs, but now that we have, um, I forgot the name of it, uh, new, new rules that came into play that those are now available. But this is, you know, a perfect example of why I think it would be beneficial to have this two hundred feet to the town, because I can't see the cost factor being much, since it's already there compared to what the cost factor is, just to keep up with all the other roads that are around there, and the fact that it gives, you know, emergency access, two different ways to get in and out. Um, which is just a benefit because of the size and the width of those roads. You know, that was always a concern. You ask anybody for the fire and the, the police, it was, you have two big vehicles going down. If mutual aid's coming, it's...
Right, and in the wintertime, it's not gonna get worse. That, that road is gonna be the easiest, easiest road to maintain, so I mean, I guess I'm...
In the event, I mean, one of the advantages of doing it, it also keeps the whole thing Lamprey Drive.
Yeah, it's a kinda two-pronged Lamprey Drive.
Right, well, that, that's better for, again, part of the reason of doing that was for, uh, emergency nine-one-one status.
Yeah.
They can always, to keep it clear, the road's more defined where they are, uh, so that first responders, you know, even from other towns, can have a better adequate, you know, um, picture of where they're going and, you know, getting there for time wise.
I guess my question would be, is just going forward, does this set a precedent for any future projects that are then deemed to be approved road because based upon what was done here?
Like, do we have an actual building, road building code in town? We don't?
Only for new.
Only for new, um... For new subdivisions.
Okay.
Because this, uh, the boards...
Supposed to be a road.
There was one and it got overturned, right? Yeah?
What's that?
Wasn't there a set of road standards and then they were overturned?
Well, we go by the subdivision rules and regulations on road standards. That's already in place.
Well, and this basically, I mean, they have the twenty-four feet width, they have the grade, they have the structure, I've obviously not seen, but towards, you know? Maybe in that other packet was the plan from the construction company of what they put in.
All right, I saw, I have that.
Okay. I mean, the lot material.
It's, it appears.
I just don't see it being something that somebody would lie about, that they only put half as much gravel down. The road is definitely like way better than anything else out there and I agree with Tim on like possibly setting a bad precedence, but at the same point, I just can't, the road's there, the cost was spent, everything is a benefit except for the possibility of the...
And the road was approved, well, by the original plans for the development of that area, there was a road supposed to be put in, it was just never added.
So it just took a while?
Gotcha. And extra costs.
Sixty years?
Yeah.
But it, what, you know, the extra cost, the expense wasn't put on board with the town.
Right.
Which is a very great benefit.
I mean, I don't think, even if all the material wasn't there, I don't even think that's gonna be any concern to the town going forward in terms of it's already way better. It's gonna hold up longer than everything else around it.
And it's, one of my other things too, is it is not a major access road where it's not going to see a hundred cars a day. I mean, it'd be lucky if it sees two.
Yep.
So for the wear and tear on the road, it's...
So I guess if you're all set, I'll make a motion to approve Lamprey Drive as submitted in the last meeting. Five-one, was it?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second?
Matt Scherland, aye.
John Moore, aye.
Tim DeBrio, aye.
Okay. Thanks, Sean, for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Am I forgetting anything?
Action answers.
Uh, action answers for next meetings. Just so you know, the planning board did, um, send a letter to the state of New Hampshire regarding the Pataca Way's expansion of their, um, call it RV area, um, and was asking, um, to be mindful of setbacks, rules, um, waste facilities, um, et cetera. Uh, it was really nice written by Ed. I don't have a copy, I didn't bring it in. Uh, but that is on the planning board's side, not our side. That's them taking action on their, their own in order to try to hopefully the state keeps, um, us active for what's going on and them to be going on. So if anything arises, that we can at least have a somewhat of a knowledge to address any potential issues that we might see. Um, even though they're probably gonna do whatever they want, because they're the state of New Hampshire.
With that being said, what would you like to do with the correspondence that's been, being received?
Well, I mean, I just read it today. Yeah, that's the one right there. Yep. Are you talking about the...
Yeah, we're starting to get a lot of, uh, emails. Seems like it's a template letter in opposition. I think we've received at least three or four and more incoming.
Yeah.
I would say that this would be normally something that we might pass on to our state rep. Or I can, we have a point of contact that was named back in November, when they started the informational meetings, I mean, I can start forwarding the information to them, but it's totally up to you.
Do we know when the next, I know when they came a month ago, they said that, that thirty percent mark, they're going to have another meeting? Have they announced that yet?
Not that I'm aware of. Reach out for information.
Because in their schedule, the field work was supposed to start in like, May and June, but I'm assuming that's not happening yet.
I understand people's concern. Um, I read this, and I attended the, the state meeting. But, you know, it's, I don't want to say that we're helpless against what the state wants to do on their property. Uh, it's an uphill battle, which we can express residents' concerns, um, you know, as being on the lake myself. But I have mixed feelings on this, as towards, I'm not against it. So, I mean, I wouldn't want to see it happen, but, you know, the state's going to do what they're going to do, I just hope it doesn't affect, um, you know, our police department. But, you know, because most of the problems that happen there are usually underage drinking and...
Yeah.
Uh, loudness and, because they don't have the staff to, to police their own thing there, so they have to call in others, so... Be nice if the state would come in with a trooper, but...
And they did say the Nottingham Fire Department is not responsible for regular calls, is that what they said?
Right.
Can't you say the fire department's not responsible?
Isn't that what they had said at the meeting?
I don't know.
But they've been out there for so...
No, no, I mean, they're responsible, if there's a forest fire, they're going out there, if there's a...
Drowning?
Drowning, they'll be out there, that will be, that'll be the state officials and them.
Yeah.
For EMT purposes. No, I didn't say they weren't.
You're down nine-one-one, who's going to go out?
Sure, yeah.
They do search and rescue and medical...
Drug overalls last year, they had you out.
But at the meeting, they had said something about...
I don't recall at the meetings, but that's, again, I, there was a lot of information thrown at the meeting, so we'd have to go back and look if there was minutes on the meetings, which was what was said. We're not saying that the town doesn't go out there, we know the town goes out there, we all lived here long enough, we can see that they go out there. You know, that's what their duty is, is to go respond with the ambulances to any emergency medical issues, or if there's a fire in the back of the state park, which was last year, they have to go out and address the situation. You know, towards the new thirty-five campsites, adding to that, of already what's going on, is kind of the question you'd want to say, you know? Skip?
John, were they gonna, um, upgrade their sewage system in any way, shape?
That was one of the concerns the planning board actually wrote in their letter, was making sure that their septic system, which allegedly, again, not saying for fact, because getting probably the facts is going to be tough, um, about their previous issues with the septic that's over onto the Nealside, uh, Neils Cove area, um, and the Leach Fields or whatever over there, because they are dated, they're older, and the park has expanded. Uh, it's a number of campsites, uh, over the past couple of years, by a lot. So whether they do the upgrades, especially when they're adding a pumping station uh, at the top of the hill for them to unload RVs in their disposals, um, it will be a, a taxed, uh, system.
Well, I didn't, I didn't mean really for the new site, but that's for the whole park.
Well, yeah, the planning board mentioned it, but again, that, I mean, you'd want to hope the state would do its, uh, do justice and do the, the right thing for its, its parks, its, its, uh, people that are coming in that are renting the spots, you know, and good for the environment, but that's...
It sounds, and like, in one of these correspondence, that the current plans call for a placement of a sanitary dumping station inland, and some of this, somebody's calling to say, move the campsite near where the dumping station would be, usually large campgrounds do have some form of cleanout station further inland, so it sounds like for the campers, that there'll be some sort of water and large septic facility that usually gets pumped out at some frequency.
I agree, I didn't see anything that indicated the rest of the park.
Yeah, I, I was not fully, the, the plan seemed to be growing so fast.
The three-point-five million, did not say there were, any other plans upgrading anything else besides the area that was on there, so...
Yeah.
I think that was actually people, some of the people brought it up at the meeting about that, fact of upgrading, since they're making it bigger. And I don't know if they gave us a straight answer on saying yes they were going to or not going to. Um, but, you know, the upgrade of that is more for the environmental impact than it is actually in fact impacting anybody, any resident Nottingham as per, you know, your particular house, it's more for the fact of the environment and keeping our town, since it is technically the town of Nottingham, even though owned by the state.
There actually is no dumping station up there right now, they have to go off-site to a commercial facility or up to the park over in Allenstown.
Right.
I think they plan on build with...
It's a new, that would be a new facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be, they showed you where it's put in, if, you know, the park, it's going to be up, it's on a hill, so the fact that... I wasn't saying for public record, but we'll just throw it out there, thank you for the, uh, the comments on that and how it is. Uh, but it'd be away from all the campsites, is where, that station will not be around places, I don't think they want it around, uh, people camping, so the location is actually on a dead spot of the, uh, park road. I mean, the best I think we could do is, I mean, I know, who wrote this? Is it, we could forward it to a state rep or, or something like this, or, I mean, when we have enough set of a plan?
Forward stuff like that to...
Well, hopefully we'll know after July.
You already have one.
Right, we've got one, so... Um...
And Raymond's still affected.
Because again, we don't, right, I, I don't think we have, we can just express our concerns for what it is, but I don't think any action we can take is going to stop what's going to happen. Do you have a packet of all these, I take it?
Mm-hmm.
Of course you do.
Hey, while we're talking about this Patacaway Lake, I have a question on why we're lowering the water level up there every fall? And the answer I got from the person that runs it for the state said, that there's a meeting every so often, and that the last one they had a while back, the Lake Association was part of the decision-making on lowering that for fall, which eliminates public access for the town to get on that lake in the winter time. So, I was told three different stories over the last six years, and finally I got the straight answer. The Lake Association, they have a, a meeting, when we've called for one, and I have called for one, go in and find out why we don't have public access in the wintertime. They gain access to the lake that's owned by the state, and we pay taxes here at that.
Yeah, I, I've, I've been on that lake my whole life, so I, it's been, they've been, the state's been lowering it every, it used to be seven feet, now they did four and a half feet. They do it for drainage, they're, right now they keep it...
It wasn't decided at state level, it was decided at the meeting they had.
Well, we don't have the, the, I shouldn't say we, the Lake Association doesn't have control either of when they, when they do lower. The state tells us when they're going to lower the lake, so we don't, I'm sure there's plenty of residents, if you live on the lake, that would love to see the water there until November, or even the beginning of December.
Back to the Lake Association.
Of course they did.
So we're going to have a meeting, get them to...
Absolutely, I'll be there.
...control about it, and bring it up.
The Lake Association's having their annual meeting on June fifth at the state park?
June third.
Sorry. Thank you, Steve. June third.
One figures that, that was the main culprit, was the Lake Association had just, didn't want the lake up in the fall, they want lower.
Well, they've been lowering the lake longer than the Lake Association's been around, so...
If I represent the Lake Association, and we have no control over that.
The collect's not off.
Uh, it is a state decision. Uh, we have many discussions provided, but it's purely the dam and the state's opinion to read.
Let everybody know once you get the, uh, the committee sent to the state.
Absolutely.
You have no public access.
That's one other thing, I did...
I'd like to keep the water till December first, if I could, I'm in no rush.
When is this meeting you're talking about?
As soon as they get back, they get, I have a state that runs that division, it's going to get back.
Good.
He has to ask for one.
What division is that?
The dam division.
No, the dam division works for the other person in charge of the environmental, whatever his position is. Because the dam people are to tell me a different story every year.
Damn.
The only time you can talk about that.
Well, we'd be very, I'd be, I'd personally be very interested in the results that you find.
Yeah.
Um...
Yeah, it's ridiculous that they lowered, like, they only lowered lakes that year, they don't lower them all.
No, but I mean, they do lower...
You know, Patacaway's not the only lake around you that's lower.
Yeah, it's the same thing, they have associations that are asking to lower.
I highly doubt the association have much...
That's what he said.
By the state.
That's what he said. It's more of a meeting, he said she said.
Yeah, if we want, any of the public comment?
Action items?
Or we do in public comment?
I don't want to.
I need a non-public too, please.
Excuse me?
I would like a non-public too, please. Sorry.
Uh, action items for next meeting are listed as...
I think we closed up a lot of things.
We did. Uh, did we want to, there was, you mentioned to me too at the last meeting, we kind of talked over, what's his name, about the access to the town beach?
Oh, yeah, there were two separate letters sent.
Autumn wrecker?
Yeah.
Right, one was about that, you want to address that in more, or are you happy with how we handled it last meeting? Do you know what we're talking about?
Which part? I'm sorry.
Uh, there was a part of the meeting, uh, last week where we briefly talked about the fact of putting up signs that were supposed to be put up and never put up, that will be put up, um...
Oh, for parking?
For no parking on Deerfield Road, uh, due to the heavy, like, just upcoming Memorial Day weekend, if the weather's nice, it just becomes a madhouse over there with the amount of people trying to access the lake through that part there. Um, there was another resident that was here at the last meeting that was supposed to be addressing the state park about their adding or improving the conditions of the road in the parking area. Um...
Then we refer to the town, to the state park.
Right, it's on state land, it's not ours, so it's, it's there, it's up to them to upgrade their road and
That's correct.
Adjust that.
You refer to the state.
Correct. Uh, so those two issues on there, then there was another issue about, um...
So it was more, it was more in line with access, getting more access for residents?
Oting access for residents, um...
In the parking situation, he was seeing if it could be for residents only on the road versus no parking at all.
Right, which, we got to look for people's dump stickers to see, the recycling center stickers to make sure that they're, uh...
Residents.
Right. Yeah, I can't...
I have a sticker of windshield.
Yeah, I got one, I'm not, I'm just saying, everybody doesn't follow the rules on that, so... Uh, and then it was about accessing, I mean, if it's easier just to put on that road, since it's not the widest road, Deerfield Road, and to keep it that, that one side of the road has no parking, just to make sure that the access is staying clear. Um, because that was actually done years ago. We had people accessing the lake in the winter on the ice, and they were parking on some of the, uh, the, the camp, the lake roads, and they were making them so much smaller because of the snowbanks that the, uh, fire department went around and started asking, leaving notes on everybody's car to move them, because they were afraid that their access was going to be impeded by the amount of people parking on the side of the road. So that's a concern, a reason why, you know, due to the size of our roads and the age of the roads, that, you know, we don't encourage anybody to use side parking, um, you know, especially over the weekends, especially in that access area over there, because it's already too
Not even seven winters, you can ride right down to the lake.
Oh, yeah.
Don't need to park inside, or just come over, get the key, and go down and use it.
Where, through the town beach area?
Yeah.
Okay, didn't know that was possible, but, sure.
Why not? Come over and ask, they want to use town beach for this idea? If there's nothing stopping the passage, let them use it.
Again, no issue with that either, but that's another open discussion for, uh, future, because we open the beach now from Memorial Day to Labor Day is the actual hours, I think. Last year, we actually opened them up earlier for the access to that, that's May, and so it opens every morning at eight o'clock and closes at seven. There was discussion with some of the people about keeping it open later, uh, due to the sun being out till nine o'clock, instead of having the hours close earlier. Uh, this is something that we might want to put as an action item for next meeting, to maybe address the, and get the willingness of the, uh, we'll call them the gatekeepers, since they're the ones with the keys and they're the ones opening.
Volunteers, I'm assuming?
Uh, small stipend.
Yeah.
I think they get paid like a hundred dollars a month
Okay.
to do that, so it's not like a law, but their opinion on changing the hours, since they're the ones that are...
They have to go out and do it at nine o'clock, so it's seven o'clock, yeah.
That's going to be, you know, it's going to affect them more often. Uh, but then in fact of even opening up, I mean, or stay, having stay open later than Labor Day weekend, you know, and the rec department did say that they did hire two new lifeguards, so... Was that some...
That's correct.
Okay, I, I...
It's not for, it's not for weekends, though, I did...
No, it's going to be for the weekdays, but that people can still access during the weekdays, which is an improvement, because we haven't had lifeguards at the
That's correct.
town beach in, I don't know how many years it's been.
Because of...
Right.
How long have they been, twelve years?
Right, it's been quite a while, so, it's a nice improvement, you know, and the beach was all cleaned up, uh, at the last Nottingham cleanup. Uh, yes, we'll take, this is basically going to be our open discussion right now, so before we go to non-public, we're going to probably do this for a couple more minutes, and then we're going to go into our non-public to...
I believe at the last meeting, it was asked to see if the lifeguards would work later or stay there as well, and did we get any, uh, anything on that?
Uh, we haven't had a meeting with Courtney, so...
Go ahead.
But noted to ask what the hours they'll be. Uh, because there's also to a, again, I hate bringing it up, but it is the truth, that there's only so much money that's budgeted for the allowance that we have to pay for the lifeguard, so even if their eagerness is to work over an extra, the money might not be there to allow that situation to happen. So that's something we'll be concerned on, the amount of hours and when they're working.
Absolutely.
You know, it'd be nice too if they give a study of how many people are there during the days, and they keep track so that we know, you know, as part of what we're paying them for, what's the participation of people accessing, so that we can see even for next year about adding more hours to them or something like this, if they feel that the need is there. You know, since we don't have any tentative numbers of how many people access the town beach every day, granted it's weather, you know, permitting, uh, but, you know, information like that would be more, because that'd be also a way for us to uh, validate expenditures maybe in the future on that area of the town, uh, for better access, better communication, or everything for the town, if we know how many towns that people are actually accessing and using the facility, the area.
That was my question, because we have the recycling center sticker and it's go to the town beach as well. And I have, I will say, I haven't been to town beach in years. But one of the last times I was down there, everybody on the beach was from out of town.
Right.
Every kid in the water was not from that again, because my kids were in the water and they asked. That's not outages.
So all they, I mean, again, because of the rules and regulations, all they have to be is with a town resident.
Right.
So if you're a town resident, you...
Does that get the police involved, anywhere?
Due to the staffing, I mean, the police will go and do a pass-through and look, but it's only if there's a disturbance of some kind, you know, where people are drinking on the beach that they're not supposed to, then the police will be addressed on situations like that, or if somebody starts to light a fire on the beach, uh, it'd be more prudent, uh, it'd be more on situation basis where the, because of all the activity, because our, we only have one usually full-time guy on.
Right.
You know, so at eight o'clock at night, there's usually only one person that's out, depending what else they have to do, it's, I guess, the level of call necessary. You know, because they lock the gate, have locked people in before.
Right, that's what I was pointing at, is anybody open there, a street crew that says, hey, you just closed?
The new guy doing it now that's doing our evenings, um, is actually doing a sweep-through before he locks the gate. So, he's been really good at that last year, because I don't think we've got any calls last year, everybody getting locked in, so...
And that's a police officer that's doing it?
No, it's a town resident that we pay a hundred dollar stipend a month to lock, uh, the gate every single night, and he takes his truck and actually drives down to the beach to make sure no one's there.
I was thinking the police are on twenty-four seven, that'd be a good, I mean, why...
Well, the, yeah, well, to get them to open properly and to close it properly at a certain time, due to what's going on. Yeah, well, to get them to open properly and to close it properly at a certain time, uh, due to what's going on, it wouldn't be.
I just wanna remind you for the person doing the minutes that none of us is going to be identified without.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Hating names.
I don't get to run the meetings very often. All right, uh, we are gonna go into non-public, uh.
We've got a few questions we need to talk about before we go non-public. What is, what?
Why don't you come sit down?
I will, no problem, Jim Fraser.
How much money is this town spending for investigations?
Uh, on all of them, or just on, you talking?
I wanna know what is being spent out of our taxpayers' money for an investigation, and the second thing I wanna know is what plan of investigation, what criteria of investigation are we using? I've did a few investigations being active duty for 26 years, and we never took fifty some odd days to get a resolve. It either comes, within the first two weeks, it's a criminal offense, it goes way of the judicial system, or there's a set time limit that it gets resolved. There's a lot of unopened questions for the town, and I don't understand why it's so difficult to say, hey, we have this date, this is the criteria we're using, and this is how much we're spending, period, dot. Cause I don't understand.
Well, we didn't ask for the, this to happen, but we're not going into any details on it, because again, we're not supposed to, but we are in contact with our lawyer, uh, and the lawyer, uh, counsel for the town about the actions that we're taking, and this is the action they told us to take. Towards the expenditure, it'll come out how much it costs when it's done.
So what, they have to have some sort of plan when they have an investigation. They can't just open it up for a unending time period.
Well, it's not.
Well, no one in town knows when this is gonna end.
Well, we're hoping it's gonna end soon.
Well, the lawyer needs to come back and say, hey, this is the criteria we're doing for the investigation, this is the timeline. It's got nothing to do with what's going on inside the investigation, but this drag out is unbelievable.
We're not happy about it either.
Well, if he works for the town and we're paying him, we should get an answer. Right?
We've asked, uh, but we'll hopefully, this will be wrapped up sooner than none, so that we can just move on.
I heard the same thing three weeks ago when I asked, what are the former people that was on the committee?
Again, it's, it's a situation we don't, I mean, I'm fortunate that we're, we're in right now, we can't speak about it, uh, because it is a personal matter and it's personnel, and we're not about to speak about anybody's situation personally, so.
Well, I guess the lawyer needs to come back to the town and give us an answer.
Well, all the answers will come out, and the prices and everything you have will be, will eventually come out, but as of right now, I, I don't have the information for you to get.
A simple question, what are they using for an investigation plan? And if he doesn't, if there's a timeline, plan.
The lawyers advise us to hire a private investigator that is, that has done investigations for thirty years in, in the state of Hampshire, and she is conducting the investigation as a neutral party.
So in the past, have we had an investigation?
Not in my time here.
Okay, so there's no plan in place to say, we're gonna have this kind of investigation, this is what's gonna happen?
We are going by the recommendations of our lawyers, we don't have a written, uh, how to handle a situation like this, cause it's not part of our normal procedures.
You are the selectmen.
Yeah.
And we're asking you to go back to the lawyers, and then comes tell the rest of us what's going on.
Because it's an active investigation on employee practices, it's exempt from disclosure while the process is underway. It's RSA 91A5:5, um, we're just, we're bound by that statute that nothing can be disclosed at this time, and it's about invasion of privacy, it's about internal practice.
Nothing to do with the time period of doing an investigation and/or how much money's being spent. Zero is a process for an investigation. This part of the process, you investigate if it's criminal or not, and if it is criminal, it goes off to the criminal side. The rest of it doesn't take that long to make a decision. And if they're taking months to do investigation work, then we have to know as a town in the future what we are gonna know in the town. I mean, somebody has to give us some sort of guidance, expenditures, because we, I thought we paid the taxes to get these guys to do this work for us. And it's, we're all in the dark. You know, like I said, I did investigations in the military, it's a standard process in place, if it goes beyond that, leadership has to make a decision, in other words, the town makes a decision, we're gonna go past that date.
We're not at a point to make a decision, or the board's not at a point to make a decision until they can get the conclusion from the inquiry into the initial complaint.
Okay, so basically, no, we have no timeline and no idea what it's gonna cost until it's over. I wish I was a lawyer for the town. It's, that's, it's wrong, beyond wrong.
Hi, I'm Cindy Bloom from Southern Dwight Road, and I'm also concerned about the investigation that's going on. Um, is there a reason that a written statement of the concern can't be provided to the people who are involved? Because I'm told that's why they won't meet, meet with the investigator.
It's also exempt from disclosure from the RSA that I stated.
You should ask yourselves that then, because if that's the reason that this is going on and on and on, and we're paying more and more money because the people who are being accused of something are asking for a written complaint or concern, so they understand what the issue is, that should be provided.
They have all the contact information they need for the investigator and the attorney, it's.
They don't want that, they want a written statement of what the concern is.
They're not conducting the investigation.
That's true, but they're involved, and if you go to the police, you should ask that. Is there a reason a legal representative can't be presented, present when they're interviewed?
Again, that's, I have no information on that.
Because the investigator is telling them they can't have a representative with them when they're interviewed.
Again.
You're asking us for high-level legal questions that are being handled by a professional lawyer's office, so.
Well, you should check with them and see if they're really handling them, cause we're paying for it and you're paying for it.
I can tell you that my inbox is inundated daily, we are checking in with them, this is inactive.
Those two questions you should ask, though. Also, the park is opening, motorcycles are out, and brush fire season is here, and I would think it would be all hands on deck at the fire department right now, and it's concerning that we don't have all hands on deck. Um, it's been said that the complaint was anonymous, is that true, or is it an unnamed complainant?
Not answering the question.
Or is it an unnamed complainant?
Not answering the question.
Because you don't know?
It goes back to the further we cannot disclose.
If you said it's an anonymous complaint.
Didn't say that.
That was said. But that's good that you're not saying that. Um, at the last meeting, the chair indicated that contact was prohibited for these employees with only the fire department, contrary to what the letter said, is that true? That they can contact town employees? And also volunteers are not employees, I believe, has that been straightened out?
I believe the intent of what they were saying is that they're not supposed to be discussing matters. They can come into town and register their vehicle, they can come into town to use the police station, they can come to play pickleball, I believe, for some of the things.
So that's been clarified, okay.
They are not supposed to be contacting people.
About the situation.
About the situation.
All right, and that's been clarified to them?
I, again, that goes. In writing, so. Not everything.
You all put it in writing, you said? Cause you guys wrote the letter. The board did, not all of you, but some of you.
Right.
So that would be good to put that in writing. And it would be good, we're, we are paying for folks, so it would be good to know that people are doing the work they need to, and it seems like our, uh, building inspector, this is the time of year when building inspections get done, so he should be doing his job full-time, thank you.
Today's the 15th, right?
Yep.
It is, just trying to get ahead of this. Anything else for public comment?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Um, so what's the status of the staff at the fire department at this point, are we down EMTs?
No.
We have?
We have proper coverage, and every shift has been covered, and every shift is being fulfilled.
So we've brought in two more EMTs?
Every shift has been filled, and all coverage has been made.
And are we down EMTs? We are down EMTs.
We worked, we've been down EMTs for thirty years there.
Are we down two more EMTs, or we work before March 23rd?
Uh, yes, well, if you wanna count those two, yes, we are, but we have all EMTs covering all the shifts that are necessary. So the town is properly staffed at the fire department. I mean, you can go ask the guys down there if it's staffed.
I, I just wanna know the answer, I mean, it's a medical concern, I'm a medical professional, and it's concerning to me that we might not have the kind of coverage that.
Well, we're, I mean, again, so not to go, I mean, not to get into, you know, beat this down, so the coverage that's there is, is adequate towards what we need to cover the town for our ambulance, our fire, um, it's all there, I mean, we have adequate, you know, we are down two, but we've been down before when people quit, when people leave and stuff like this, it's, it's no different of a situation where when you have some here, then you get two people to leave, and they're not there anymore, then you're still down two then, and that's a whole different situation.
People with very much experience, and we.
We're not going into details, I'm just pointing, again. Thank you guys for your time tonight, we are going into non-public. Perfect, write me on Facebook.
Need for personnel.
Whoa, when they clear the room, whoa.
Did you have any knowledge of any of the three women that spoke as far as names?
Uh, the one that was speaking right there used to be the.
Cindy Bloom.
Thanks.
Yeah.
But any of them from the back?
Uh, I knew that, um, Cheryl Menard, that was one that sat out back, that raised her hand, that was when we were discussing the, um, the State Park. And I kept that really loosely, which I probably should have been a lot tighter, but I just didn't feel like pulling people up, so. All right, so we're gonna move to go to non-public per RSA. You got that in front of you?
Yep, 91 dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two.
We need a roll call vote.
Ms. Schreland, aye.
John Moore, an aye.
Tim Davio, aye.
We are in non-public.